I'd like to reconvene the Gloucester County Board of Supervisors and the School Board meeting. Ms. Cronin, will you call the roll? Oh, Ms. Steele, excuse me.
Mr. Gibson?
Here.
Dr. Ward?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Hudson?
Here.
Mr. Crisco?
Here.
Mr. Hedrick?
Here.
Mr. Bizani?
Here.
All present.
All right, would you all join me in invocation of Pledge of Allegiance?
Yeah.
And as our meeting has been reconvened as well, Ms. Dayhoo, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Burak?
Here.
Mr. Drew?
Here.
Ms. Espinoza?
Here.
Mr. Post?
Here.
Ms. Rice?
Mr. Anderson?
Here.
Now, okay, okay.
Ms. McPherson?
See, I know I waited for a reason. We're actually all better than this, guys. Would you now join me in invocation of Pledge of Allegiance by Mr. Ashley Crisco?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Let us take a moment to reflect on the responsibilities and opportunities before us as we gather here today. We are entrusted with the important task of making decisions that will shape the future of our community and the education of our children. As we come from various backgrounds and beliefs, let us find common ground in our shared commitment to the well-being and progress of our community. May we approach our discussions and decisions with wisdom, compassion, and a spirit of collaboration. Let us also remember those who are most affected by our decisions, the students, parents, teachers, and all community members. May our actions today reflect the best interests of the people we serve. May we find strength in our unity, may we find purpose. Let us begin this meeting with a spirit of cooperation and a shared dedication to the betterment of our community and our schools. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Move to the, move to the adoption of the agenda?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to amend our agenda, please. We need to move item F, the Gloucester County Public Schools Capital Improvement Projects Update, to letter B, and Mr. Hartley will be giving that for us this evening, and I think that is all that I have, and I'll make that as a motion.
Do we have a second to the amendment?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, move to the adoption of the consent agenda?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, matters presented by the boards. We'll go first with the board supervisors, Mr. Crisco.
I just want to thank Mr. Hartley and Dr. Vlado and the school board for taking us on a tour of the in-progress renovations at the high school tonight. A lot of neat things are happening over there, and each day we get closer to the end of it, and I know we're just getting started, it seems like, but I can't wait to see the finished product.
Yes, thank you. Anyone else? With this flat?
Any school-
Mr. Anderson.
Any school board members have any items? All right, thank you, back to you, Mr. Hudson.
Uh, county administrator items?
Just one quick reminder that the harmful waste collection is going to be this Saturday from nine to three at the Guinea Road Convenience Center.
Thank you.
Superintendent, do you have any items?
I have two short items. Good evening, Chairman Hudson, Mr. Crisco, Chairman Anderson. Members of both boards are viewing public and folks who are here in audience tonight, two quick items I have before you tonight. One, I want to reference on September eight, Governor Youngkin and Secretary Steggera released the 2023-2024, actually 2022-2023 Standards of Learning Results. At that time, it was reported that nearly one-half of all third graders through eighth graders were at risk of failing the SOLs. Just want to share that here in Gloucester, we do much better. We do qualify for a grant, actually on the all-in tutoring. You may have heard that in the news, it's going to affect our schools, our schools are going to work very hard in using these funds and developing programs for our students that, that works. I look forward to presenting more information on this at the November school board meeting. The second item, as I'm completing my onboarding and entry plan, I want to invite you all through a program we're going to develop the second part of the school year, which is the Shadow of Principal for a Day program. We know that understanding the work of schools requires that we understand the work of educators. I've completed several school visits with board members to really get into classroom, to talk to teachers, to look at students and what they do, and then this program will actually allow, provide the opportunity to a school board member or a board supervisor or community member to actually shadow and be a principal for a day. And so I look forward to actually expanding that trust and transparency that we all bring to this job, and I hope that you can join us in the spring on those, on those visits. That completes my two items.
Thank you, Dr. Vlado. Well, move to the citizen comment period, as this is a work session. We'll give you three minutes, come forward, state your name, magisterial district, and just talk about any item that's on the work session agenda. Three minutes. Three minutes. Anyone else like to come forward?
Reviewing the attendance record for this year compared to last is very interesting. For years, I have been asking to see the school capacity printed at the top of each school membership report monthly. I know the high school, when expanded, had a capacity of 2,100 students. After this remodel, what will be the new capacity? As you see the beginning of the new 1,200 housing development, is there any current planning for a new elementary school? And what will you tell the citizens what you expect to have in student population to the county's formula? I have always been amazed at how you determine next year's membership. You use a horizontal numbering system. I always use the oblique method. Can you explain to the citizens why this is done and not by oblique, since the progression is always about the same amount moving forward annually to the next grade level? As for the capital improvement program, I needed some volunteers to help me review a massive review of both the county and school programs. There is data there that the citizen needs to be aware of and recommend changes as to how this process is accomplished. The budget is a working document, put together in many segments, many to be looked at by the public. Now is the time to review. Remember, every time you put debt on the table, the senior will be 48 to 59 years old before the debt is retired. The correct question remains, what the benefit is, and what will the project be worn out before payoff? Think about that as you step up to your ballot. Thank you for the time.
Thank you, Mr. Maury. Would anyone else like to come up for the citizen comment period?
My name is Susan Austin, I'm from the Ware District. I came home, or I was home last couple of days ago, and my son came back from a haircut, and he was incensed. He wanted to run up to the school and demand to see somebody, and I said, "What the heck has gotten you so upset?" He says that the school, Gloucester High School, employs a confused person who thinks he's a woman, and he is cleaning the women's restrooms while there are women in there. So, I just want to know if you all agree with this, and I don't give a darn what you think about me, because I know that you think I'm crazy, it's already been stated, but I want Dr. Vlado to know that this is going on, and if you want some particulars, I can give them later. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak tonight on citizen comment period? All right, we'll close the citizen comment period. We'll move to our work session agenda. The first is a presentation of the Virginia Law Enforcement Professional Standards Commission reaccreditation to Gloucester County Sheriff's Office. Sheriff Joe McLaughlin of New Kent would like to make the presentation.
Good evening, Chairman and Joint Boards. I'm Joe McLaughlin, the sheriff of New Kent County and a member of the Virginia Law Enforcement Professional Standards Commission Board of Directors, as my friend Sheriff Darrell Warren is a member of that commission as well. Here to honor and to thank the Gloucester County Sheriff's Office for their dedication to professionalism, to exceptional police work, law enforcement work. They not only have gone through a reaccreditation process, through a stringent process, many standards, but they also are certainly well-known through the community regionally for being great partners to all of our agencies. If we need anything, we know we can call and get help from them. We've always been able to count on Gloucester to support the entire region. A little bit about the Virginia Law Enforcement Professional Standards Program. There are four separate sections in this program, 192 standards, about 600 bullets that each agency has to follow through and show compliance over a four-year period. Now, this is a volunteer, voluntary process, there's nothing in the Commonwealth of Virginia that requires accreditation. However, I'm very proud to say that the Virginia accreditation process just went over 100 members, law enforcement agencies being accredited. In doing so, you open your agency to at least three assessors coming in, staying two to three days, viewing your files, looking at documents, conducting interviews, talking to the community, and working through the process. This process is fairly lengthy, as I said, it's not a rubber stamp, it's not the good old boy process or the give-me process, you work to earn this, and certainly Gloucester County Sheriff's Office has done that. They are, I need to look at this to say what, their fourth award for reaccreditation in the program, and I'm honored on behalf of the Virginia Law Enforcement Professional Standards Commission to present this certificate to Sheriff Darrell Warren and his entire staff for all the work they've done. And I have to say, knowing Gloucester County, you are blessed to have such a great sheriff, a great sheriff's office, but I think in turn, they are blessed to have the community support that they get from their community and from their local officials. So, before I give it to the sheriff, I'd like to read it. Certificate of Accreditation. This document certifies that the Gloucester County Sheriff's Office came before the Virginia Law Enforcement Professional Standards Commission on October 3, 2023, and has met the requirements set forth by said commission, and is therefore certified as an accredited agency for a period of four years, this being their fourth award. They will start the process, or have already started the process, towards reaccreditation, because when you're voted on in front of the commission, the next four years, you start that process. So, on behalf of the commission, I'd like to present this to my friend, my cohort on the commission, and your sheriff and his agency, Sheriff Darrell Warren. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm certainly proud to be here this evening and am honored to call Sheriff McLaughlin my friend. He is actually retiring at the end of this year, and certainly going to miss him. New Kent is a much better, safer community for his service there. Joe and I kind of grew up in the ranks together, back in 2009-ish, when I was the chief deputy here, he was the chief deputy in New Kent, and I was our accreditation manager, he was their accreditation manager, and he was the first guy I picked up the phone and called and said, "I need some help." And that guy has always been there for us, his staff has always been there for us, very good leader, very professional organization, so certainly am pleased that he was able to join us and be here today. I also want to introduce my accreditation team, because really, this isn't about me, this is about the work that they do every day. Starting with my accreditation manager, Captain David Shield, most of you know him, administrative assistant, Carrie Quick, and my evidence custodian is Jason Schnur. So, Carrie was promoted into this position in April of last year, and there's, it's a four-year process, so she kind of came in on the tail end of this thing, and she thought she was getting a promotion until we introduced her to the accreditation process. But she, she really, she jumped on it, she's very meticulous in what she does, very thorough, which is absolutely what we have to have, so she really done great, very proud of her. Jason has, has worked with us on two separate occasions. He left for a brief period of time to be an ABC agent, and then he left, he realized how much he missed me. So, we certainly welcomed him back with open arms, and it's, and it's important to mention that there's a retired captain out of Campbell County, she's a master assessor, and she was just so pleased and surprised that hell well and, and maintained and organized that our evidence room was, and let me tell you, evidence is what gets agencies in trouble. Not keeping thorough documents, not having the items where they're supposed to be, there's a lot to maintaining an evidence room, and Jason has done a phenomenal job. She said it's one of the best rooms she's been in, she was in there taking pictures, it was just great. And David has run my accreditation for me since being sheriff in 2012, and has done nothing but 100% every time. He's, he's a phenomenal person, he is certainly one of my right-hand people, and I'm very proud of their work. So, again, this isn't about me, it's about the work that they do every day, and it's also important for me to mention that we couldn't do what we do without the support of our board of supervisors and Ms. Steele. I'm very appreciative of you making public safety a priority in this county, and we greatly appreciate your support. So, on behalf of the men and women at our sheriff's office, thank you again for allowing us to be here this evening, and thank you very much.
Sheriff Warren, thank you, we appreciate everything you've done for the county. Make sure to let your staff know that we all appreciate everything you've done to get reaccredited for the fourth time.
Certainly will, thank you very much.
Same from the school board as well, I'd love to tell you that I'm shocked or surprised, but I'm really not, and you know, I don't go, I don't need to go through the list, but whether it be through the school resource officers that we have in the schools, or the community partnerships through Shop With The Cop, I'm super excited about the basketball game at the end of the month. I think the whole community is really excited about that, so from our board as well, thank you for everything you do.
Thank you very much.
Pass that on.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is Gloucester County Public Schools Capital Improvement Projects Update, Mr. Brian Hartley.
And while I appreciate having the original bullet, I can assure you that you will learn much more from Mr. Hartley over the course of the next couple of minutes that you would have from me, so thanks for bringing it around.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I'll do my best, as Mr. Stevens pulls up our summary. I just want to make a note for some of the obvious reasons, we have only begun to collect our information to start putting together our long-range capital plan that would be contingent somewhat on the referendum. So, this is last year's summary of our long-range capital submission, so I just want to make sure we're clear on that, that's not this year's, that's, that's to come, so the timeline on that's changed just a little bit. So, so with that, I'll start with the HVAC replacement, and the way the schools are listed are the order that they're in and need to be replaced, we work closely with our contractor, Honeywell, our HVAC contractor, and they base the replacement cycle on ASHRAE standards, and ASHRAE standards are anywhere from 15 to 17 years, depending on the type of equipment and, you know, parts and everything else. So, Bodytote is on there first, ASHRAE standards would suggest that Bodytote's HVAC equipment from the renovation would have been replaced in 2020. So, we're doing what we can do through our maintenance contract to keep it running, and then the schools, we're a little closer with the schools behind it, but time is, you know, quickly adds up and is not on our side, so. And I will state that we will always have HVAC on a long-range capital plan, as many units as we have, as many buildings as we have, that, so this is just for Bodytote, Achilles Avenue, a little bit of control work at Petsworth and some small work at our facilities building. And I will note, this is one of the items that is on the referendum, so the referendum where the passes would come off our long-range capital plan. So, I will stop after each project and see if there's any questions or clarification I can provide. All right. Division restroom renovations, I will be quick with that. Originally, the high school was on the front end of that, and the high school you saw tonight was going, undergoing some heavy renovations in our restrooms anyways, really due to ADA issues, and then some under-the-slab piping issues, and it allowed us to kind of add a redesign to it, so that was not as expensive to change the design of the restrooms through what we were doing already. And you'll see at the far end of the five-year plan, that's a placeholder for middle schools, and I would state that, you know, right now, as far as our middle school restrooms are concerned, we don't have any ADA issues or any under-slab piping issues, so not really a need to get in there and address any floor issues or redesign issues currently. So, I will stop and see if there's any questions about the plan for division restroom renovations. All right. Another item that will probably always be on our long-range capital plan is the school bus replacement cycle. Again, these are last year's numbers, and even the numbers we got in the fall, and we did get approval for school bus replacements this current fiscal year, but it wasn't enough to pay for the buses we put in, they, they went up that quickly, so I think that was a number for eight buses, we ended up with seven. And we anticipate another significant increase, so I'd say two or three years ago, a 77-passenger bus is about $100,000, give or take, now 77-passenger bus, depending on what options you put on and what vendor you go with, can be anywhere from 135,000 to 150,000. But the standard replacement, I think these groups heard it before, is 15 years or 200,000 miles. I would say about 30% of our fleet is beyond, I would say 35% of our fleet is beyond one or the other, and 30% of our whole fleet is beyond both of those standards. So, as you can imagine, you know, as buses get used and they, and they get older, we're going to have to replace them, so again, this is something that will constantly be on our long-range capital plan.
How many buses make up that number?
We're in the low 90s, I think we just deadline once, I don't know if we're at 92 or 93, but the number that makes up above 200,000 and above 15 years is 28.
Thank you.
All right, school bus AC retro project, last year, we picked our 10 best mechanically performing buses that did not have AC on them, and we were able to retrofit them. We don't have any buses that mechanically could handle a retrofit now that don't have AC, and then, of course, moving forward, as bus replacement cycles fund it, the buses that we're buying are having air conditioning on them. We have, we see an increase, and I'm sure it's across the country, of health needs and individual plans for students, whether it's a health plan or an IEP that will require, you know, air-conditioned space on, on school transport. But since we have retrofitted all that we can really retrofit, we will not be asking for anymore, so that's an item that would actually come off our long-range capital plan. And then TC Walker soffit and brickwork, if you paid attention, you know, walking, walking in, you notice that there's bracing on bricks and there's holes in the soffit, some of that soffit material contains asbestos, so we either need to remove it or contain it. And this building did go, a large portion of this building went under significant renovation in 2013, but this building was built in 1950, and nothing on the outside has been touched as far as renovations or repairs. We secure what we can, but we have some crumbling, we have some settlement cracks, and we have some deteriorating mortar, so we need to address those issues. Moving on to 1973 wing renovation at Bodytote, some of the heavy reno work on that project would be in the restrooms, and that would be to address ADA issues and piping issues, no significant redesign issues in that original estimate at this point. Also, some, you know, envelope issues, this is the wing of the building that has doors that open to the outside. If we were, for security reasons, to remove those, and again, this design is not complete, then we'd have to put a sprinkler system inside, and I believe code would require us to sprinkle the inside of that building if we renovated it. In addition, there'll be finished work, new floors, new ceilings, new lights, paint, casework, things like that. All right. And again, the Bodytote renovation, we're making note that that is on the ballot, if it's approved, then obviously that would come off our long-range capital plan. And then, next, this is Achilles Security Festival, just note that we were awarded last year the school security equipment grant that funded that, I think the board supervisors will remember us coming for the match grant side of that, but that project was actually completed in June, they did it in a three-week period, and it looks very nice, and it does exactly what we needed to do as far as providing that second level of entry into a building. But that project is complete, so that project would come off of the long-range capital plan. Lockset replacement, that would be for all schools, the high school's currently set to get a new lockset design to make it easier to lock a classroom and quicker to lock a classroom, so in a dangerous situation, you wouldn't have to open the door and lock a classroom from the outside, but that design is something that we would like to use across the school division, just for, to have uniformity and consistency, so everybody will be able to quickly lock the door in case they need to. Then the sports complex option, again, another item that's on the referendum, but we would address a number of issues with sports, sports complex, excuse me, and the first would be, this is an assessment in improvements to bleachers and lights, that stadium was built in 1993, we haven't inspected annually, but we would like a deeper inspection and to see if we do need any improvements or expansion. Also, would include some field improvements, you know, a multi-use turf field, resurfacing the track, some grading work that would need to occur, the baseball field in particular, and then- And then it would also include moving the tennis courts or resurfacing the tennis courts at the very least, and I don't mean new paint. That court needs to be completely ripped up, whether it stays where it is or not, and redone. And then there'd be structure work, so there'd be work done to the locker rooms, to the field house, to the concession stands, to the restrooms. All those buildings need work, roof work at the very least. Okay. And then some items that you see no numbers for, asphalt sealing, and Page is listed as the first school. Through, in a capital improvement a couple of years ago, we had a ton of projects that were approved, and one of them was paving projects, and we're actually able to utilize that funding to put pavement down, mill and put new pavement down at all our schools and even part of the high school, the teacher parking lot, an area we knew that wouldn't get touched through renovation. But in order to maintain that investment, we talked to the people who put the asphalt down, and they said every three to five years would be their recommendation to seal it. We did not put a price in it because, you know, prices have changed so much, fluctuated so much. But at every three to five years, Page would certainly be the first building that would need to have their parking lot sealed, and we need to start thinking about the other ones. And then roof work, we currently don't have any needed roof work, but warranties expire quickly, issues come up all the time. It's kind of like school buses and HVAC. At some point in time, you're going to see roof work pop back up on any school's long-range capital plan. So with that said, I will pause and see if there's any questions. Yes, sir.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you. At one of our earlier meetings, Mr. Reckers presented a rough draft of changes to entrances for students and parents and all that.
Yes, sir.
Would that be part of this high school renovation? Because I think there obviously would be some costs, I don't know in terms of whatever it is today, but I think it was all to be mashed up with the current renovation process.
So yes, absolutely. There's the east side of the high school and the west side of the high school. East side being like where the student parking lot is and the field hockey field. All that, right now, is currently projected to be contained within the high school project. And what that would really do is utilize the current, what's currently being used as the bus loop. We would make that the student parking lot entrance and pull the student parking lot closer to the building so students aren't crossing in front of parents or in front of buses. And then what we would do is take this current student parking lot entrance and make that a bus loop entrance, so that buses would go between what's left of the student parking lot and the field hockey field. And again, we would pull that closer to the building so the kids getting off the bus wouldn't be crossing traffic either. Parent loop would be on that side we looked at tonight where new school counseling offices. And it would allow us to then correct the size of the field hockey field that's currently there and remove light bulbs. So that's part of the hopes for the renovation. Hopefully, we don't have any significant surprises, but from a safety aspect. I will add, at this point, the sports complex, one of the things that we hope to address, whether it's through referendum or rather through capital funding, is to organize a sports complex in a way that we can fence and control who gets into different playing fields. As an example, right now, we can't for baseball, field hockey, softball. You know, we can for inside sports, and we can for football games and soccer games out at the stadium. But again, we'd like to have just different access points, so we can have our own check systems, whatever that might be, for safety reasons. All right. Any other questions? All right. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Mr. Hartley. Next item that's not on the agenda is, I'd like Mr. Wilmot to come up, please.
Safe?
I guess. With you around, I don't know if anything's safe. It's a certificate of appreciation presented to Edwin Wilmot, and grateful recognition for 15 years of dedicated service.
Thank you, sir.
Now, next item on the agenda is Virginia Parks and Recreation Society Awards Recognition. Ms. Katie Lake.
Good evening. Thank you for letting me share a little bit of good news with you all tonight. So we recently convened in James City County for the annual conference of the Virginia Recreation and Park Society. It is a professional association that unites parks and rec professionals across the state for education and networking opportunities. And in James City County, we also recognized the best of the best. When we submit awards, they are usually given in population categories, so a locality like Gloucester is not competing against a locality like Virginia Beach or somewhere in Northern Virginia. I am extremely pleased to announce that we brought home four awards at this year's conference. So the first one is our most creative marketing piece. This is for the brand-new Daffodil Festival website. I'm sure everyone is aware of the Daffodil Festival. It is the county's largest event. The website was originally designed in 2016 by a contractor. At the time, it was considered top of the line. It was gorgeous, but it started to reach its end of life and became more difficult for users and also for the administrative side. In September of 2022, Susan Ammons, our tourism coordinator, designed this all in-house. The entire cost of the website is $300 per year, and there were no other costs associated with it. You may recognize her name. She was instrumental in the development of the new county logo as well. It went live September of '22 and had close to 48,000 visitors at the time that we submitted this award, which was in July. The next award is Best New Environmental Sustainability Award. This is Sherry Kosakowski, our Clean Community Coordinator. This was for spearheading the county's B-City initiative. Not only does this county, does this committee host pollinator events, they also participate in education opportunities, plant new pollinator gardens. This was actually a process that we started pre-COVID, and it sort of started installed multiple times. But when we brought Sherry on board, she spearheaded it and saw it through to the finish line. In November of '22, we became a B-City. The next award is the Best Snapshot Moment, which is exactly what it sounds like, an image that just really captures your attention. This image was captured by one of our park rangers, Elizabeth Kiefer, during a fall paddle program. Since that was taken, we have used it in various social media marketing campaigns, not only for the parks and rec side, but also for tourism. So this image is not only seen locally, it is seen statewide and possibly nationally because of how we use it. This is our distinguished volunteer. This is Stan. This award is not given in a population category. This award is statewide, and they only give two. Stan has volunteered with us since 2016. He gives, on average, 15 hours a week. In 2022, he volunteered approximately 780 hours at Beaver Dam Park. And because of his service to us, he has saved the county $175,000. When everything was shut down at the beginning of COVID, and the only people that were working in our parks were the four full-time staff people, we had no part-timers. Everyone was at parks because everything was closed. Stan was there, making sure our equipment ran, things were cleaned, because he loves the park. It was truly an honor to nominate him for this award and to be recognized as one of the top-two volunteers in the state. All of these awards are a surprise, so you don't know who's going to win when you go to the awards banquet. We just told him we had nominated him and we wanted him to have a good time. He was shocked, is probably the best word. He couldn't be here tonight. I'm really bummed about that, but he did have plans with his family, which of course comes first. But I am extremely blessed to have all of these people. We are a small department relatively, but they are creative and tireless. There were over 125 applications for awards this year, and 48 awards were given, and our department brought home four. So thank you very much for letting me share that little bit of good news. I'm very proud of them.
Thank you, Ms. Lake. Next item on the agenda is a joint resolution to approve the memorandum of agreement between Gloucester County Public Schools and the Community Services Board for Substance Abuse, Substance Use Prevention and Counseling Service. Mr. Wright.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the school board and gentlemen of the Board of Supervisors. I appreciate this opportunity to speak with you regarding the proposed prevention and treatment specialist position for Gloucester High School. The applicable resolution is on page eight of your packet. The accompanying memorandum of agreement between Gloucester County Public Schools, Gloucester County, and the Middle Peninsula Northern Neck Community Services Board follows on page 11. So I wanted to give you a little bit of background to inform your consideration regarding both the opioid settlement and the collaborative process that led to the recommendation for this role. So in 2022, nearly 83,000 opioid-related overdose deaths occurred in the United States, and that's out of roughly 110,000 overdose, substance use overdose deaths nationwide. And that is the highest level in recorded history. One of the considerably concerning trends as part of this is that overdose deaths for those under age 24 increased 77% between 2019 and 2021, primarily due to the scourge of fentanyl. So you probably all saw in 2021, the first settlement was executed, the first national opioid settlement, which amounted to roughly $26 billion nationwide. And as part of that, Gloucester County will have access to, at a minimum, between now and 2039, roughly $747,000. So one of the things we did, obviously in the county, we're not addiction services providers. Now, that's just not within our operational wheelhouse. So we recognized we needed to reach out to the community, reach out to relevant stakeholders, and figure out what is the best way to leverage these funds to have the biggest impact on those individuals and families struggling with opioid use disorder. So as part of that, we held several stakeholder meetings, which included a lot of community providers. The sheriff's office was there, CSB, Department of Social Services, Virginia Department of Health, and Riverside Health System, among others. So we had several meetings, primarily to talk about what different programs are already in the community, what we could leverage and potentially enhance. We also had a citizens forum in December of 2022 at the library and had roughly 40 residents attend that. It was actually incredibly well-attended. We were a little worried about capacity in the community room, but we got a lot of great suggestions and recommendations from people who are actively dealing with it in their own lives. We also did a resident survey that got additional information, and then had multiple individualized meetings with area providers. So as a result of all that review process, what we determined was that, at least initially from a pilot standpoint, we should look at addressing the crisis across the spectrum. So basically, what we looked at was through five different potential programmatic lenses. The first one was assisting with cost of treatment, primarily medication-assisted treatment. Enhancing treatment access, primarily through increased access to transportation for folks who struggle with getting transportation to their treatment. Expanding connections to treatment resources, particularly at the first responder level, when EMT and paramedics respond to an overdose incident, being able to connect those folks who are going through that to potential resources. Increasing access to program information. One of the things we're doing internally is actually creating a comprehensive resource guide for folks who are in the community, so they can see, within the Middle Peninsula region, all the programs that are available to them at the various stages of addiction that they're in. And then more relevant to what we're talking about tonight is the prevention programming. Obviously, that's a principal facet of trying to abate opioid use, is actually reaching the kids before they start. So what this began with was a discussion about what evidence-based programming we could provide within the schools utilizing our opioid funds. And then that evolved into a discussion about supplementing our existing counseling resources with a part-time, CSB-provided qualified mental health professional, who would actually be housed within the high school. And then ultimately, much to my excitement and the excitement of the school staff, CSB agreed to leverage funds through a grant they had recently received from the Department of Juvenile Justice to actually supplement whatever funds we would put in to have a full-time, dedicated to Gloucester County Public Schools, prevention and treatment specialists housed within the high school. So basically, they'll pay 50% of the funding from their DJJ grant and will leverage opioid settlement funds to make up the other 50%. So this position, as indicated in the MOA, will not only provide best-practice prevention programming, it will also be utilized to provide an individual and whole-family substance use counseling and assessment services when needed. So it really, really will run the gamut in terms of trying to address the issue. So again, with the funding and the nature of the settlement, while a primary focus of the prevention efforts must relate specifically to opioid use, holistic review of protective factors for all forms of stimulant use are also permissible. So I wanted to say that this has been an incredibly collaborative process between Gloucester County Public Schools, Gloucester County, and the Community Services Board. And I would be remiss if I didn't thank and give particular gratitude to Matt Lord, Dr. Stefan Migas, Lisa Jones, Vanessa Morris, Brian Hartley, and Dr. Vladeau of GCPS, Emily Eanes and Linda Hodges of CSB, and our own PIO, Quentin Shepherd of the county. So thank you. And if you have any questions for me, please feel free. Yes, Mr. Bizani.
So who is the providing agency? Can you define? It's not defined in here in this memorandum of agreement.
It's actually indicated in the MOA, sir, that that position will be provided by the CSB, by the Community Services Board.
Community Services Board. And is the funding for this for one year, or is it going to be recurring, is it recurring cost?
Actually, for this initial MOA, we would be going through June 30 of 2025, just to give the program time to develop. And then, I mean, we're still looking at this as a pilot, but we wanted to give them enough time to develop the position, develop the protocols, and then there's the potential to extend it beyond '25.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome, sir.
Any more questions for Mr. Wright? All right, there's a resolution on page nine for both of us. I'd like to make the motion that the Board of Supervisors approve.
Second.
All right, Ms. Steele, will you poll the Board of Supervisors?
Dr. Ward?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Crisco?
Yes.
Mr. Hedrick?
Yes.
Mr. Bizani?
Yes.
Mr. Gibson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
So as this is a joint resolution, we also need to take action on the school board side so we could entertain a motion.
I move to adopt it.
All right.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Ms. Dayhoo, would you please poll the board?
Mr. Burak?
Yes.
Mr. Drew? Mr. Drew?
Yes.
Ms. Espinoza?
Yes.
Ms. McPherson?
Yes.
Mr. Post?
Yes.
And Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Wright. Next item on the agenda is Gloucester County Public Schools Enrollment Update, September 30th, ADM.
Just a quick question before we move on. Does a memorandum of agreement require a separate approval, or is that by default approved through the resolution?
That was approved.
Okay. Thanks.
You're on.
Thank you, Ms. Hudson. So this time, I would like to take a few moments to review the September 30 report. As a reminder, this is a report you received every year, and the format this year has not changed. So I want to share some numbers with you. Your enrollment target for the 23-24 school year was 4,930. nine hundred and thirty. As of September thirtieth, the actual enrollment is four thousand eight hundred and thirty-three. This is a difference of ninety-seven students less than projected. So I want to share some factors to consider. Using a cohort model, one of our losses were in kindergarten where we lost thirteen students across five elementary schools. But also using that cohort model, we had a decline of enrollment of thirty-seven students in the tenth grade at the high school, twenty-one in the eleventh grade, twenty-three in the twelfth grade. And so we're monitoring homeschooling numbers, which are approaching levels we saw during the pandemic. Um, so next steps, uh, we will reach out to homeschooling parents to get some feedback um, on what's happening. We want to look at class size efficiencies. We know at the high school, we have over two hundred courses. So we think about one FTE or two FTEs. Uh, these are full-time teachers. Spreading it against all those courses is an economies of scale approach. So, um, but we will look at some efficiencies, however, um, it is incredibly complex to, uh, the nature of the coursework at the high school level. And so, um, one other thing that, um, we'll bring before you again is the, um, March thirty-first ADM. There are two ways to compute this. One is the September thirtieth report and then the average daily attendance, which is computed and submitted to the Virginia Department of Education on, um, March thirty-first. So again, we look forward to digging a little deeper into the data and getting more information. But this concludes the, um, enrollment report and I will take any questions or comments that you might have.
Dr. Wirth?
In terms of, you know, just projecting long-term, uh, I know we've seen a graphic that has been presented to us on a very good basis, um, the decline of students in Gloucester County. Um, any thoughts on, you know, giving that, you know, the nurt- nurtification of where attendance may go? Um, you heard a comment about, in fact, we have a development called Reserves that will have a significant, significant number of condos and houses that, uh, will not be age limited. And so, do you, can your staff start thinking about where populations of students may go in the next five, ten years? And again, the suggestion as what individual names, the barrel of that schools, the need for schools?
Yeah, that's a great point. So one of the things we're looking at is a capacity, like, and each building, what's the maximum capacity, looking at every single room. We know, for instance, um, with the Avid and One-to-One, that it frees up some space because we no longer need computer labs. So we're going to develop that information or update that information. Um, one of the things, going back to those numbers, um, when we have almost six hundred homeschooling, um, students, we're looking, can we capture two or three hundred to bring them back into the enrollment, particularly at the high school level, to, uh, account for some? We know the county has grown at, uh, you know, half a percent, whatever that is. I think the numbers are there. We need to, again, to work on recapturing some of the students that may have left for a variety of reasons.
Mr. Gibson?
Thank you for your present, presentation. My question is, you are currently in the middle of a renovation of the high school, which is making significant improvements. There's potential for, uh, additional improvements throughout the school system with the renovation of the Botox meeting, with the, the possible new sports complex. In your long experience in public education, how does the quality of the public school's facilities affect enrollment?
Well, this is, um, unique, right? I think a lot of folks here either graduated from Gloucester High School or know who, somebody who has graduated and it's a community school. So having that pride in the school, um, and that history critically important. And so facilities, the role of facilities, when we look at learning spaces, we know that learning is going to look differently. We want more collaborative spaces. And you saw some of that tonight. You saw larger classrooms, you know, that sitting in rows of thirty may not be the way to go. What we see now is actually students working in groups, collaborating, the way you see them in the workplace. So, um, we're thinking about, for instance, the, uh, Learning Commons, um, not a Learning Commons, but a Media Center. Um, you know, that could be a place where we could do something differently to allow for more collaborative spaces, um, because that's, again, how folks work in the workplace. So I think the more pride we take in that facility and the better we design it to accommodate for instruction, I think it's just going to bring more students into, uh, into the mix.
Thank you, Mr. Vladeau, Dr. Vladeau. Next item is Gloucester County Public Schools Accreditation Update.
Thank you. I get this mic a lot, at least for, for a couple of times here. Um, and so, um, the capital improvements update was provided by, um, Mr. Hartley. In regards to joint board meetings, you have that. I'm following the agenda, item G.
You missed E.
E. Um, yes, the main event. Thank you. Accreditation update, if we could bring it up. All right, and I have a clicker here. So, um, we think about schooling, the main purpose of school is to educate students and to provide them an opportunity to choose a career, choose a job, choose the college that they want to go to. And the way we do that is to, um, student achievement. And so accreditation provides an update on student achievement. So I want to share with you our first strategic goal, which is to exceed all annual state and federal performance benchmarks, um, established by, um, the Virginia Department of Education. We know college and career preparation is particularly important, um, and excellence and citizenship and academic achievement. Again, that is the reason why we get up in the morning in public schools to make sure that happen, happens. So I want to share with you some overview of the data and types of data available. Um, I could sit here tonight and talk about student achievement for a long time, but, um, we're going to limit this presentation to about seven, eight minutes because there's a lot. What I don't want to do is brush over the hard work of our educators. So this data is available on the school quality profile and I linked it. Folks can go in there later and click on, um, that highlighted part and they could get into that as much detail as they want to, right? So, um, we're also going to focus tonight on pass rates. We know that when you compute growth in a lot of these models, and folks may know, what did they pass or did they not pass? So we're going to focus strictly on whether students reached the four hundred or did not reach that four hundred. Although, sometimes I want to recognize our educators that getting a student from a three-thirty to a three-seventy-five, it's a lot of work. And that student may still not pass, they're well underway to actually, um, doing well. So, um, again, I want to share some of that hard work that our educators have put into this. So we're going to look at state pass rates for the, um, twenty-one to twenty-three. I want to show you a trend tonight, not a one-year, and so how we're doing in terms of, um, the trend. Um, and this first set of slides is going to focus on a cohort, um, not on a cohort model, but on one-to-one. In other words, if I compare this year's third grade with last year's third grade, you have two sets of students, right? So I think the groups are different, so that's what the first set of slides is going to look like. So look at, uh, this, um, slide. What you see in light blue or blue-gray, uh, you see that that is the twenty-twenty, twenty-one. Uh, the dark gray is going to be twenty-one, twenty-two, and the orange is twenty-two, twenty-three. And if you look in the grade-three math, um, we went from sixty-three percent in twenty-one, twenty-two, seventy-seven, and eighty-five percent. That is tremendous growth. And that is intentional, um, and that is purposeful, and that's what results really look like. So I commend, um, our educators for getting those results. Reading, we do have growth in reading. Uh, we know reading sometimes is a little more difficult to break apart, the standards. Uh, we know, um, those skills are sometimes embedded, but we're working on reading and we're seeing some growth in grade-three reading. We know grade-three is important because the trajectory for where students will go, what courses they will take, really begins in third grade. And that is a critical, critical point in, uh, students' lives. So let's look at, uh, fifth grade. Fifth-grade math, sixty-three to eighty-seven to eighty. So if you were to take a line and put that line, connect the sixty-three to eighty, you know, notice that we have, again, tremendous growth in fifth-grade math. Um, and fifth-grade reading, um, we do have a, a nice increase last year, but if we were to draw a line through those three bars on the right, you will see that we have, um, reached a plateau that we're working to unlock over the coming, uh, months. And I think there's, uh, more work to be done in that area. So now let's look at, uh, grade-six math and grade-six reading, um, forty-three percent, if we're looking at, um, on the left where we were three years ago, to seventy-seven. And then, uh, in, in grade-six reading, we're looking at seventy, uh, to seventy-five. Again, if we were to look at that, that is, uh, tremendous growth in both math and reading. And then grade-eight math, uh, on the left, you'll see, um, we started with forty-nine percent in two thousand and twenty-one and we're at seventy-three. And grade-eight, uh, reading, uh, sixty-nine to seventy-four. What you see throughout this, reading is a little more difficult to unlock and that's an area that we're going to look a little deeper into. So you saw the comparison of different classes at the grade, same grade level, right? Now, we're going to look at cohort. Imagine the same group of students that you followed them from third to fourth and through fifth. So, um, in this scenario, we're looking at, um, the spring of twenty-three, uh, grade-fifth math, the blue bar is where they were in third grade, the gray bar is when they were in fourth in math, and the orange bar is where they are in fifth. This were last year that we completed. And I think that is a very accurate projection of what's happening. This is toward the same students and their growth. Now, when we look at, um, um, reading, we see some of the same patterns that we saw with our one-for-one comparison, sixty-five, seventy-four to sixty-nine. Now let's look at the middle school level. Same pattern, uh, we start at forty-three percent in, uh, eighth-grade math. Uh, actually, this would have been in sixth grade to seventh grade, dark gray to eighth grade. Now, we'll hear across the state that math programming is important and what folks will tell you is that, you know, that if they get clustered into advanced math versus not advanced math and you're comparing sort of apples to oranges, I want to caution us because the same, all the school divisions do the same thing, um, we, through the gifted education programs and, uh, course offerings. So these, um, again, these results are significant and we have a lot to be proud of, um, from our, um, staff at the middle school level. Uh, same story with, again, um, grade-eight, uh, reading cohort, the same students in sixth grade were at seventy. When they moved to seventh grade, they were at seventy-nine. And then when they went to eighth grade, they were at seventy-four. And so, um, there is growth there, uh, however, not as steep. So I do want to focus on a couple of other things. So what you saw is the achievement of all students. Now, we do break down, uh, performance by subgroups. Why is that important? Because we want all of our students to achieve. And so I want to focus on two areas, economically disadvantaged, these are students who, uh, qualify for free or reduced lunch, and students with disabilities. So for all division, if you were to combine all of those results, uh, those are, would be the bars on your left. And then economically disadvantaged, you see that we have approximately a eight-point, eight-to, nine-point gap. These are students who are, come from more poor backgrounds. And then students with disabilities, um, this is, um, in reading, thirty-four, thirty-seven, and thirty-four. Why is this important, you might ask? It's important because we want every child to earn a diploma. And if we start at thirty, then somebody's got to make up that gap. Because there's, again, every student needs to graduate from high school because they're going to be your neighbors, you know, they're going to be our employees, uh, and the health of this community depends on all students, not just on some. And so it's up upon, up to us to advocate for all students that they do well. I want to share some great news with you. This is exceptional. At the high school level, the reading level of students with disabilities is ninety-six And that means that our students with disabilities, we're going to have at least a ninety-six percent graduation rate, because you got to get through that reading test. I would put that in the top level in the state, the results. So I think that is being creative, that is trying things differently. This didn't work in the past, let me try this. We tried this five times before, let me try this again. I mean, it is problem-solving one-on-one, and I want to commend those educators because they're making up that ground. So, um, I talked earlier a little bit about the Virginia All Tutoring Approach. What we want to do is catch students in the third through the eighth grade, um, because then that means there's less work at the high school, uh, to be done. And, um, yes, I see a question.
Dr. Vladeau, how does that compare? You said ninety-six percent for the economically disadvantaged in that category. How does that compare to the regular cohort that's in, in the school system as far as their percentage of reading ability?
Uh, so this would be a comparison between reading level of students with disabilities and economically disadvantaged of all student, and all students?
And compared to the all, to the other students who are not in that category?
That's a great question. That's exactly a sign of success, that there is no gap. And that is the goal, to make sure that, if there's gap, there's very little, and I don't have those specific, um, numbers in front of me, but I know ninety-six percent eliminates the gap. And that is the goal for everything, to eliminate that gap, to make sure that all of our students achieve. Thank you for that question. So, um, next steps, uh, we know absenteeism, the state, I think we all remember absenteeism back in the day, it may have been like eight percent a year. We're looking at fifteen to twenty percent, not, not just here, across the state. It is on everyone's radar. So we need to pay more attention into being, um, and reaching out to students and using a system of interventions to bring kids back into school. If you're not in school, you can learn and that's going to take resources. That may include bringing kids in two or three days per, uh, per week, because we can't get them every day, make sure that they get the services, instructional services that they need. So we need to focus on attendance because it's the first step. We know that tier-one instruction, right? If I'm teaching a lesson and I only get fifty percent of students to do well in that tier-one instruction, level one, now if I work to improve that and I get seventy percent, eighty percent, then there's less work to be done. So we're going to be focusing on tier-one instruction. Yes?
Regarding absenteeism, is it, uh, to a particular school, grade level, like high school, high school, do you keep track of where the absentee actually occurs and, you know, what might be happening to cause that absenteeism?
That is a great question, and I've been in countless meetings about, can we use the data to draw some patterns? Is it mostly economically disadvantaged? Is it mostly students that have the resources to travel and their parents are taking them out? It is all over the place. I think what, um, virtual instruction did is show parents that they could stay at home and still do some learning. However, we know that is not working, so showing in the data. So our goal is to improve absenteeism or improve attendance for all students, but we do not see a pattern currently. All students, um, when we have twenty, thirty percent, um, across the state, um, we're going to have to work together on, within our system, and then including, um, you know, core services. At, when we have done forty interventions in school, what can we do as a community to bring big ba- uh, kids back in to make sure that they get the educational services that they need? So, um, and, um, I'll provide more information at the November meeting with this Virginia All Tutoring, All, All-In Tutoring Approach. Um, that's extremely helpful because it'll provide our county with approximately one-point-three to one-point-six million dollars devoted to remediation, um, intervention, um, and reteaching, including attendance. Uh, so I do think that our staff, um, again, will have opportunity to get some compensation, but also to hire additional tutors and involve the community. We'll be reaching out to our community for, for tutors, paid tutors, and, uh, we hope that everybody that wants to be involved in schools can be involved in schools by tutoring a child. And last on this slide, we're going to look at, uh, review of special education delivery models, uh, because we know that, uh, all of the students have an individualized education plan. So is that plan aligned? Are those goals aligned? Are they, uh, on target? Some strengths I want to share with you, mathematics. We are, uh, outperforming just about everyone out there. You saw the trends, and they have a system that works. If you remember, eleven years ago, you know, math wasn't as popular as it is today. We've done a lot of work in eleven years to get us to this point. Bethel Barata, um, and Gloucester High School, uh, met all academic accreditation targets for all students and subgroups. So, uh, as I shared, we'll focus on students with disabilities, economically disadvantaged, focus on attendance, absenteeism, and reading, which is fundamental. Um, we, um, have to do a lot of work there, good work, and I think our staff are- Good work, and I think our staff are excited to dig in. I know I presented a lot of data, but that is the core function of our schools. At this time, if you have any comments or questions, I'll gladly take them. Yes.
Mr. Bizani.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. One of the things as a university professor that I see is, and not particularly from this school, but from all high schools, that it's great that students can read and comprehend what they read. But being able to put a coherent paragraph or sentence together is probably something that all high schools and elementary schools need to focus on because by the time they get to, by the time they get to college, when I read papers, if it doesn't make sense to me, I skip it about the second paragraph, and I just don't read the rest of their paper. So being able to communicate on paper is critically important, I think. And I think maybe perhaps, you know, you might consider getting students to logically put their thoughts together in a certain way. There's a great book on that called Minto Method by Barbara Minto. And she comes up with a way to logically put your thoughts together on paper so that it makes sense. So maybe a concentration of course on, you know, reading comprehension and logic in writing would be great. And it's not from this school. I see it from all students coming from Northern Virginia, you know, from Carolina. Because we get a, we get a whole slew of students from all over the, all over the country. So just want to make that mention.
Thank you for that comment.
Yeah, thank you. You know, we hear a lot about, we did this school, but we hear very little about after-school programs that students have an opportunity to participate in, like band or art, different clubs, sports. I think we've had talks in the past about the importance of these types of activities that keep kids out of trouble and encourage them to participate because not every kid wants to be a football player or soccer. But our kids don't like to play band, as Mr. Bizani can certainly attest to, or art, or anything like that. So it would be nice to hear something about the after-school programs and the participation that occurs there, whether it's increase and decrease. Just because I really do think those are the types of things where kids make friends, interact socially, and understand, you know, the importance of playing. So maybe sometime hearing about the after-school programs and the participation in these after-school programs would be very beneficial also.
The research shows that being involved in one activity, sport, or club is the greatest predictor of actually academic success because you feel you're part of a community. So I think we're going to go ahead and measure that and look at how can we involve more students? We want every child to have a loving adult and something that's fun to do at school, and that's going to help with absenteeism. Oftentimes, we say about absenteeism, well, they're not coming to school. Well, there's something to look forward to. If they're part of a team, they would be coming to school. So there's a lot of work to be done in that regard. I think good work, and we look forward to providing some updates.
Do you still have the after-school classes that take kids that don't have transportation? I know that was something that we talked about all the time, about providing funds. Does that still operate to help kids that don't have transportation?
There's some after-school, not as much. I know staffing our drivers, that is difficult, not just for us. I think as a profession, that's difficult to staff. And we know that we're going to have to look at this specifically in regards to our tutoring plan because that will require five hours, and you can't do it all during the day. So we're going to have to look at after-school activities and after-school transportation for our students.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah, just real quick. The last couple of school board meetings, we've had some very positive changes. I would like for you guys, once in a while, to see one of our school board meetings. We had a young person give a pledge of allegiance. We're in conversation about having the national anthem sung by some of our choir members in schools. We have had presentations from the NROTC about the drones that they're working. We've got a lot of stuff that comes to the school board meetings. And I would encourage you, Tom, or even watch it, it's incredible. And to see these young people would be very exciting. They talk about, the last one we had, about some of the clubs that they have, they call them houses. And they compete within houses of the school or in their class level for beads. And at the end of the year, whoever has the most beads gets a pizza party or whatever. But it's really exciting to see these kids get involved. I mean, it's so exciting. Like, I get, it blows me away to see how excited these kids are to get in front of people. And they speak very well, so come please.
I think the whole thing of kids interacting with each other, developing the social relationships, not the phones that they set. Getting them active and doing things without having to always use that phone. And yeah, I, I think it's great. That's why I think my after-school programs, regardless of whether it's a sport or band or art, every kid has an interest in something. It's trying to tease out what that kid really likes to do. And, you know, not every kid's going to be in, you know, sports or whatever. There are things that they really enjoy doing. That's what we have to kind of work on the front of, what they really, what their passions are.
I just wanted to add one quick thing to Dr. Vladeau's points from an organizational standpoint for the benefit of the Board of Supervisors. So at our October meeting, we actually approved a personnel action that stems from Dr. Vladeau's look that's tied to this accreditation piece, which is, you know, historically, everybody knew Dr. Wagner as the Assistant Superintendent for Instruction. Well, after Dr. Vladeau dove into the numbers and what that really meant, it was, that's a lot for one person to handle. And that, that position is what facilitates all the consistency and the methodology that will be used to increase these trends even further than what we've seen. So now, effective, at that last meeting, we hired, instead of one position, two positions. So we have a Director of Primary Instruction and a Director of Secondary Instruction. And so those two positions will work across the school division to ensure consistent practices and make sure that these trends continue. So that, that was a big change that we saw, and I appreciate looking into that, and that will help. So the next time we see these, I'm confident they'll be even better. Just wanted to add that. Any more questions? All right. Thank you, Dr. Vladeau.
Thank you.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is discussion of proposed calendar for the twenty, twenty-four joint meetings of the Board of Supervisors and the School Board.
And I believe you have any packets, a couple of dates. If the board would like those dates, you could have some discussion. But again, they're based on last year's updates of the calendar, so.
Those two dates are March nineteenth and October fifteenth.
So they'll go in our organizational, they'll get rolled into the organizational dates that we vote on officially in January, right?
That's correct.
Any questions?
You will make it. Jeez, short timers. Next item on the agenda is a resolution for the Board of Supervisors on page thirty-eight. It's our budget calendar for twenty, fiscal year twenty twenty-five.
Mr. Chair, if I can, I'll point out that item four on page thirty-eight is highlighted in bold, and there are two different potential town hall dates. March twenty-first is a Thursday, and March twenty-fifth is a Monday. If the board is comfortable with selecting a date now, we can go ahead and build that into the calendar so that the school system will know when they're setting their annual calendar. Or you can adopt it without the town halls set, whatever your preference is, and set them at a later time.
What's the will of the board? Mike, what do you think? Okay, just checking. Excuse me. Mr. Hedrick, what do you think?
I say we just put the twenty-first. It's Thursday. Let's put the twenty-first. And we'll vote on it for there. So we have a resolution on page thirty-eight that's been amended to have March twenty-first.
Is there a motion?
Some.
Sir? There's a second. Ms. Steele, will you pull the board?
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Crisco?
Yes.
Mr. Hedrick?
Yes.
Mr. Bizani?
Yes.
Mr. Gibson?
Yes.
Dr. Warren?
Yes.
All right. Next item on the agenda is Gloucester County Public Schools Legislative Priorities for twenty twenty-four.
Thank you. So we had some discussion about it. Takes resources, strategies, staffing, and funding to educate children. And the collaboration between our boards, it's essential to continue to provide the best possible education for our students. So these legislative priorities come before you every year. Tonight, I'll review the major categories of priorities. As the school board and the Board of Supervisor interact or our representatives enrichment, it's important to advocate for much-needed resources. So I'll begin with bucket number one or category number one, which is governance and budget. This past June, bipartisan Joint Legislative Audit and Review Committee, also known as J-LARQ, published a report which found that in Virginia, we significantly underfund public education and compare all of our neighboring states. And I know you're looking for them. However, they are not finalized yet. We're still waiting on a couple of organizations to provide the final touches to this. So I'll share with you mostly the main nuggets, things that have already consensus on. And we'll provide you at a future meeting with that document. So, so for instance, what I want to share you from the J-LARQ study, this is extremely important. If you have not read it, please read it because, again, it's bipartisan, and I think they agreed that the standards of quality, and these are the formulas that fund teachers. If you're looking at class sizes, if you're looking at how we fund public education, on average, we underfund school divisions fifty-one percent across the state because there are a lot of positions that are listed that are critical. Like we talked about after-school programs and coaches, they're not in the standards of quality. So, you know, there are many, many positions that are not in the standards of quality, but they're critical to educating students. So, so again, we want to make sure that we advocate that anytime the state proposes a mandate, that is a funded mandate. For example, this all-in tutoring plan, that's an example of a funded mandate. And that's a great thing because we're getting money to do this. But in education, ninety percent of the time, they're unfunded mandates where the state requests that we do something, they provide very little flexibility, and then no funding to support it. So I think we're, again, we're advocating for funded mandates. In regards to school safety, we look for cooperation between local, local law enforcement, communities, state governments, and schools to fund and implement violence prevention programs. I know we did a lot of work, both boards, in regards to funding the SRO. We want the SRO grant to continue. We have an SRO at every school, and that, again, is working wonderfully in our school division. And also, our support from the state for strong, fair, and consistent disciplinary programs that apply the same to all students. I also want to talk to you about teacher shortage. Many, many years ago, when I got out of the Army, I took a job in Virginia because in New York, all the jobs were filled, teaching jobs. And Virginia had a whole bunch of them, and it couldn't fill. That has changed. The teacher preparation programs have dried up. Currently, there are five hundred thousand teachers that do not exist. So when my work in the HR over the past four years, we have to develop pipelines. You know, if you're coming out of the military, how can we get you a credential and a certificate to become a teacher? If you work in HVAC or welding, can we get you credentials to become a CTE teacher? So the pipeline is going to look and is looking differently. We want to share with you about special education. Currently in the region, there are two hundred teachers that do not exist, and all of us are competing for the same teachers. So it's very, very important that we continue to advocate for competitive compensation because people are willing to drive. Compensation is not the number-one thing, but it is among the top five in what people choose to stay or leave. So as a legislative priority, that would be great. Also, more flexibility for teacher licensure requirement. And I just share with you what that looks like. Alternative routes of licensure and retention or recruiting programs for high demand and high support positions. We know security positions, our transportation officials, our transportation employees are very, very needed to get kids to school and keep them safe. When it comes to instruction, we'll continue to have dual enrollment in the Virginia Community College System because that's another way that you could get college credit. It's nice to send your kids to college with ten, fifteen, twenty credits that they could earn in high school. But again, we need more flexibility with licensure because that is pretty stringent. And so additional funding to expand CTE programs. So I know I put these priorities, legislative priorities, in plain speak. And I do, we look forward to sharing them with you on paper at the future meeting.
Mr. Bizani.
Yeah, Dr. Vladeau, the state's not, you know, I've harped on this many, many years. The state's not, in order for you, you said you transitioned into the teaching profession, required you to take all kinds of different courses to be certified as a teacher. In the high school, why is it necessarily, why is it necessary for someone, like an engineer who's retired, who can teach mathematics, or an editor of paper who can teach English? Why is it they have to be certified? Where at the university level, I didn't have to be certified other than my profession, right? My education. Why is it that the high schools require certified teachers in certain disciplines? Especially if you can get a retired engineer, retired, whatever profession you can get into, why can't we just do that? Why can't we have a legislative priority so that the high schools can get these people in here and teach these kids from their professional knowledge, not just book learning knowledge, but just their professional experience to teach these kids certain curriculum?
So the state Board of Education does establish licensure standards. And I think part of the advocacy is when you understand children. And I do think there's a difference between teaching ten-year-olds, twelve-year-olds, fourteen-year-olds that have to be in a school for free and appropriate public education and someone who's willing to pay, you know, to go to college. Having said that, I do think it should be easier to become a teacher because once you, for instance, you have to like children, you have to care about them, you have to communicate well with parents. Once you get over the basics, there's no reason that somebody from the world of engineering, from the world of military, can't get into the classroom a little quicker. And so that's what one of the legislative priorities is, to allow for these pipelines and allow for flexibility in licensure.
Yeah, I think Mr. Bizani has a good point. You know, the state has revamped, has revamped all these positions that they, many positions don't long require college education and that experience really counts. And, you know, maybe following that example, as Mr. Bizani suggested, I agree with him, there are some people, maybe there are forces that have twenty years in the Army or maybe they're going to have great experience that can easily jump into the classroom with, you know, just minimal credit. The state's willing to push, you know, back the college acquiring for a lot of positions. Why can't we do that in schools?
That's a great advocacy point to exactly those reasons.
So I'd add one thing to that. I'm all for flexibility and smoother transitions, but we can't throw it all out. Some of the smartest people I've worked with in the subject matter would make the worst teachers. And so experience in doing it and experience in teaching it are not synonyms. They're not the same. And I've seen that in practice in a lot of different cases. And so we have to be careful about making sure that we're equipping them to be successful in their role as a teacher and not a doer.
Well, I'm one of those people at a university. So I consistently get high grades in my ratings. So it's not always true. That's rather probably the exception rather than the rule.
Anyone else? All right. Our next item is Ms. Steele, a discussion on request for input into Gloucester County's legislative priorities for the twenty twenty-four, let General Assembly.
I'm glad to hear that some of the things that Dr. Vladeau was mentioning are on this proposed draft, so that's, that's a good thing. This is a, just a draft for you, but I, and I'd like to run through it very quickly to explain a few differences and would very much appreciate input. I've already received some tonight, and I'd like to get more so that we can stay on track and adopt this at the November meeting so we can go with everyone to VACO. The first change is highlighting the title to calling them legislative requests and legislative priority positions. So if there's an actual request in going up, you know, to the General Assembly and saying, this is something we want done for our community. They're all priorities, but some of them are more just of a position. So last year, which you were given a copy of the twenty-three one-two so you can compare, we had the two items at the top as far as the transient occupancy tax for the state parks and funding for the Machu Picchu and Middle Peninsula State Park. Little teeny bit of wording change, I think, on both of those. Also, Also, a little bit of wording change, but the same concept of going ahead with the request versus having it as a position that exclude drinking water impoundments from the definition of impervious land area, which is, we talk about it, our HUCK map that we get penalized for Beaver Dam. And then the next one is a new suggestion, and it's one that's been discussed several times, and we usually refer to them as FLOCK cameras, but FLOCK is one company. And the type of camera is, it's an automated license plate reading camera. And right now, they are currently not allowed in the VDOT right-of-way. And the thoroughfare of having Route 17 cut right through our county, we have many people traveling through, and allowing more of these automated cameras to be on the right-of-way could help make the county a safer place. I was surprised to not see this in VACO's agenda, and I think that's one of the things to discuss at the upcoming meeting.
I got a question, and maybe we can research this prior to our next meeting, is how are these funded? Who's going to maintain them? And do we have to hire staff to review this? Or is it going to be handled by somebody else, third party? Because, you know, it's great, but then all of a sudden, it gets dumped in our lap, and it's going to cost us an extra $1 million a year in personnel and maintenance. It's not a good fit for us.
So this is basically asking for an enabling-type legislation to allow them to be in the right-of-way at all. The contract that we currently have right now, the Sheriff's Department is with the FLOCK company, and that's who I think most are using. So there's a couple of them that we have that are on county property, and they are, the handle of the contract is everything is through the Sheriff's Department. And I will follow up with a few comments from him just to make sure. Again, I know this was something that the Sheriff's Association supported last year, and it didn't get through.
Sure. And VACO is probably of the mindset of the funding issue of how it's going to be paid for and maintained, because this turns into an unfunded mandate as soon as it gets enabled at the state legislature.
So, and I know last year, what was discussed a lot and failed was requirements for maintaining the film. That was a biggie, is how long you have to keep. So it was a suggestion, doesn't have to be in here at all, but I know it's something that we've discussed, so I started and put it there. I think I had mentioned to the board before that we've received requests from both now the Hampton Roads and the Middle Peninsula PDC through the state planning district commissions to increase their funding, and there's specific information, and it's taken from their request. I'm sorry.
Mr. Razani.
Okay. So that is, that's on there as well, and again, it's specified that they're looking for increase to help through the funding of infrastructure and having additional staff. And then the restoration of the recordation tax, that again, is a new one, and that comes straight off of VACO's recommendations. The, you all may not want to have it on your list as far as requests, but that is a funding decline that we have felt, and other localities, and the state, Virginia Association of Counties is looking to try and have that changed. Under the legislative priorities, the one that you do not see, and I'm absolutely fine and happy to put it back on there, but I would like for you all to really read over last year's legislative agenda and see if this is what you stand by, and that is recognizing the evaluation and the action to optimize the overhead expenditure supporting and collection of tolls on the Coleman Bridge. I've worked for a couple of years with VDOT where they divide the figures, they're part of the state budget. I brought up to you all last year that they renewed the contract for toll operators, and there was only one bid, and the prices were what they were, and they had no choice but to go with what they were. And so I also brought up last year that the change that we now have, the state funding for the capital fund for special projects, and I think two or three repair, special repair projects have been done to the Coleman Bridge thus far with that fund that do not in any way come out of the toll. So my concern was that this wasn't accurate, and I wasn't sure if there was a consensus on the board other than nobody wants to see money wasted as to what the board feels about it.
Mr. Razani.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would like, I would like to hold VDOT's feet to the fire because we are retiring the original debt to this, to the Coleman Bridge, the original construction on which included maintenance and operations. Now that the debt will be retired either this year or whatever is next year, I know we have a revolving fund that we have to pay off. Either we cut the tolls out by a half or expedite retiring the, you know, the existing revolving fund so that these people, you know, our citizens don't have to no longer pay a toll on the bridge. I would like to have these two items remain on our legislative priorities, to keep VDOT's feet to the fire so that they don't forget, because if you don't mention it to them, they're not, they're going to forget about it and not ever come back to us again about it, so.
Mr. Crisco.
I agree, but I do know there's a number, and I think it's somewhere in the 70% neighborhood of the amount of debt has been paid by the citizens of Gloucester.
It's actually less than 50.
Is it less than 50? Okay, because I know at one point, they were saying it was more.
That's not, that's not Gloucester, that's actually the Middle Peninsula. The Middle Peninsula has paid, is paying currently, I'm not saying the past, but currently, the transponders and going through is less than 50%. So it's harder to argue for some things.
No, that's fine. I'm just thinking, though, that we have paid our fair share, and it may be time that the folks on the, in Gloucester, the Middle Peninsula start receiving a lower fee to cross that bridge and let the people that don't live in this area pay the bigger part of it. Would be, would be a solution that I would like to see if we could present that, because at the end of the day, you know, it used to cost me $500 or $600 a year to cross the bridge every day just to get to come home from work.
And again, I wanted to do whatever you all would like to have in there. I would like to mention that I have had numbers of citizens say, please don't take that toll.
I haven't heard that.
And many, many people have been saying it because they are afraid of the boom that will happen as it did before. And I've had conversations with the sheriff about, you know, whether it did impact the reduced crime rate we have over here, that's inconclusive. But there's a lot of things to that, and the board might also have some leveraging power to what happens with the funds that we've talked about in the past, that if the funds stay on, if the toll stays on, what can occur or not occur. So all that's, we're kind of following the lead of how it goes with other transportation authorities. So again, I'm happy to put in the parts, but I, I think the board can, I'll draft, I'll change the draft for the, for the board packet, but I would ask you to check with your constituency to say, do you want us to have in here right now to take the toll off? And to make sure that that's what you all do want versus, don't say it yet and wait and see till it gets worth the time.
So Ms. Steele, you recall, we had several meetings with VDOT, and they were supposed to have their finance people come in and talk to us about the condition, and they have not done that yet. So they have not done that yet, and we've asked them several times.
They have not come, they have not come to the meetings, but they have provided the data.
So by holding their feet to the fire, this is a reminder to them, hey, we're still looking, we're still waiting for you guys to come tell us what's going on with your toll, and it would be great to have this on there so that they are reminded that we are aware of what's going on with that Coleman Bridge. And gentlemen, I think we, hopefully you guys will agree that we can do this and keep this on there. Otherwise, they'll forget about it, and they'll just do what they want to do, perhaps even increase, because the last time we had a meeting with your predecessor, they were thinking about increasing the tolls to $1.25. So, and including the retirement of the debt. So we need to hold their feet to the fire, is what I'm, that's what I'm asking.
I will also provide the latest figures into the document because we are behind on what they thought we would be doing for paying it off. The revenue went down during the pandemic, and it just hasn't been there as much, so that's part of it, is the when it would come off. Also, I'm sorry.
Ms. Steele, I think Mr. Crisco had a good idea. With transponders, if you use it X number of times in a certain area, they can give reduced rates if they're Virginia tolls and a whole list of other things. If you could look at it as a way of reducing the tolls for the Middle Peninsula residents.
Mr. Burak. Yeah. They already, VDOT already allows, does this, not here, but they do it at the Chesapeake Expressway. They have a reduced toll, it's a dollar in the summer when it's $9 to go through there if you're a tourist. So, and it's, and it's based on addresses, or if you go through it frequent enough that it makes it worth your while, you pay an extra $6 a month on your transponder, and then you get the dollar rate instead of the $9 rate. So it's something that's already in their system that already exists.
I hadn't, I had not heard that example, but Gloucester residents who qualify economically and already can go through another toll that has a special program. So I wasn't aware of that one, but there is, so many times you can go through for a month, and they actually, they go in and they put credit onto your account, and then you get to go through there.
I have the phone number and the stuff that's applicable to the Chesapeake Expressway. If you want to use that for an example, I could send it to you.
Oh, that would be great, thank you. So I'll try to get a little bit more information on, on that for you.
If you take Battlefield Boulevard, you can, you can bypass the expressway toll and avoid that $9 toll.
You can, but it's.
And I do it all the time.
It takes forever. It's worth $9 a tire.
So just wrapping up, I want to make sure that I'm not accused of plagiarizing, so you will see, if you read through your VACO agenda, legislative draft agenda, you'll see a lot of the same wording. I did not do every single little thing on education or every single thing on certain other topics, but ones that I thought were most relevant and what has been brought up before. And I also threw in the short-term rentals that we've discussed about just not taking away localities' rights on that. And then also, a new one is adding in the removal of abandoned and derelict sunken boats. And we had a local request to add in for the victim services grant that has had a funding reduction. I added in the electric vehicle charging station, funding for that because we have been excluded. They're doing interstate, and if you're within one mile of the interstate and things that you can get all these grant monies, but there's only one out of the federal government that the state has not been providing. And the one that's on the federal government, you have to do on a regional scale. And again, having Route 17, there's a lot of people who travel that that are, just for example, York County has 24 charging stations and we have none. And the reason is because they planned for them with their new facilities, but they also receive grant funds for them because of their interstate location. And we can't even apply for those grants. Updated broadband a little bit, and also added in the VACO first responder recruitment, retention, training, and support. So I'm happy to make any suggested changes that if you want to email me, call me, and I will add in the Coleman Bridge, put that back in, and hopefully, again, we can adopt it.
Mr. Gibson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Ms. Steele, for your presentation and preparation of the state priorities. I would like the board to consider between now and our next meeting to reevaluate the priority of funding, specifically related to number eight, the funding for broadband. I continue to be disappointed in our partnership with the company Open Broadband. We continue to have delay after delay for implementation. I know the county is working hard to press them forward, but in the Petsworth District, there are thousands of residents who have no reliable broadband, and this is becoming a huge problem for quality of life, for education, for economic development, for home values. I've had realtors contact me and the, who are trying to sell homes, and because there's no reliable broadband in some of the home, many of the homes in Petsworth, the home values are declining, and it's very difficult to sell these homes because with the move to remote work and business, home-based businesses, they simply can't operate or work in these homes. And so I think we, as a county, need to place this as a greater priority. We need to explore every single avenue to get this broadband in place and make sure that every resident in our county has a broadband option. I would also ask the board to consider placing an agenda item and having an open broadband representative come to our meeting. I think they need to answer questions. I think they need to explain why it has taken over two years, because when I ran for office, the expectation was this was going to happen within the year, the next year. And I believe we were on track for that, and here we are, two years later, and we still have not made significant progress. And I'm not throwing stones at the county officials that are working hard to make this happen. I'm not, not doing that. I'm just frustrated with Open Broadband and their lack of progress, and I hope that we can make more progress soon. So I would ask that funding for broadband be moved up on the priority list. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right. We'll move to discussion on the state budget changes. Who wants to start?
I just have a little bit. I pretty much just wanted to give you all a heads up that we did receive the comp board salaries, and so we will be presenting to the board at the November meeting a request for providing the 2% additional funds, where it goes, and the different salaries for the elected officials. And I double-checked with the Sheriff's Department to make sure that everything that we did in July works for them. All of the requirements that came out of the full budget have already been met for them, including compression, so there's nothing else that needs to be done for them, the other county employees, and the other comp board employees. So that request will be coming forward. I don't think anything else, if anybody needs me to look up something, but I don't think there's anything else on the, on the state budget that affects the county.
Dr. Vlade.
So I have a parallel item as well. As you all know, back in September, the General Assembly and Governor Yonkin approved a budget. This provided additional compensation for state employees and, and teachers. However, I'll go back to the standards of quality. Anytime this happens, it only funds partially a little bit more than half of our employees. So the, the challenge is to work the numbers and find out how can we maximize compensation, knowing that it is critically important to build, you know, retain or recruit the top teachers in the region. So our budget team is exploring all available resources, funding, and priorities to make a recommendation to the school board at the November meeting.
Any questions, comments? Thank you both. Next item is supervisor and school board member discussions. Hold on, Mr. Crisco?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to take a quick moment here because there's a few school board members that this will be their last joint meeting with us, and I just wanted to take a moment to thank Mrs. Rice and Mr. Burak for their dedication and service to the students, teachers, and citizens of Gloucester County. They've both been doing this a long time, and I just wanted to thank you both for your service, even though Mrs. Rice is not here, but I just wanted to take the chance to thank you both, and, you know, we will, we will continue on the good path, and you will be missed as we go forward.
Thanks. Mr. Razani.
So I'd like to also thank Mr. Hedrick for his service. He's not going to return with us. And enjoyed, enjoyed our company together, enjoyed the discussions we've had. Sometimes they're a little heated, but that's okay. That's what democracy is all about, right? And so I thoroughly enjoyed your company and your, and your school and your thoughts on things. I want to thank Dr. Vlade. We had the pleasure about a month ago, maybe a month and a half ago, had lunch together. And, you know, I did most of the listening, and he did most of the talking because I just wanted to see what his perspective was on the school system. And my conclusion was, was clear that Dr. Vlade will have a fresh perspective on how our schools are going to be run. Some of the ideas that he talked about were quite impressive to me. I was encouraged by some of the ideas that he had, I'm not going to go into details, but it made me feel good about your leadership for the future of the school system served. So I just wanted to commend you and thank you, and I look forward to working with you in the future.
Thank you. Thank you.
School board members have any items? Sorry, any school board members have any items for discussion? All right, seeing none.
Mr. Razani.
So, and this is a decision that us board members will have to do, but maybe we ought to consider bringing a student to our board supervisors meeting to lead us into the pledge of allegiance if a parent is willing to send a student in to us and do that kind of thing.
Can you bring, I can't hear you, can you bring?
Oh, I'm sorry. You want me to use my university voice? Okay.
Sure.
So I'm thinking that maybe we might consider bringing a student into our board meetings to let them lead the pledge of allegiance, to give them a little civics lesson on, you know, they can participate. know, they can participate for the minute or two that they're going to be involved. We might want to consider that. I'm not demanding anything, I'm just making us want to consider that.
Anybody else? All right. You want to go first? You want me to?
We get entertained a motion to adjourn the school board. Have a motion. Second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, we're adjourned.
So moved, Mr. Chair. All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.